And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will do roll call. Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you do roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Santos.
Here.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Vice Chair Graff.
Here.
Chair Camerata.
Here. So before we go, I'd like to do a warm welcome to our new planning commissioner, Mr. Jay Mattingly. Welcome. And from that, we will go into oral communications. Persons wishing to address the planning commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Do we have any oral communications?
Yeah.
Or? Do we have anybody other than Mr. Kivitt? Welcome, Mr. Kivitt.
Mission, nothing of any substance. I just wanted to say hello to our new commissioner here and you're joining a real good panel and hope you enjoy your experience and you'll see me often, but the front center seat is typically mine, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kivitt. Let's go on to item three consent agenda. We have approval of the prior minutes, May 8th, 2023. I have a motion to approve.
So.
A second, so we'll do a motion in a second. Mr. Graff did the motion and Mr. Joaquin did the second. So we could do roll call on that or we could do all in favor. So I guess all in favor, I?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of minutes passes. All right, item number four, public hearings. For A, this is a long one, so. The amendment to a site plan review number 1049, a zone variance number 246 and a minor conditional use permit number five for two unpermitted units. Lending 1658 square feet, the unpermitted expansion of units 204, 205 and 206. A 256 square foot patio to allow up to 50% of the ground floor to be occupied by a combination of uses identified in the Lamita Municipal Code, section 11-11 dot 48 dot O2, paragraph B. A variance to remove the loading zone requirement in order to add regular parking spaces and for a shared parking arrangement at 25820 Lucille Avenue within the commercial retail zone and finding that the actions are exempt from CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act. And the applicant is Jeff Kaufman on behalf of the owner, property owner David Nasrati and Max Net Commercial LLC. We have a presentation by Assistant Planner Barbero and if you would do that presentation for us.
Mr. Chair, before that presentation, I live in the greater feet of this property.
Okay. Okay, well, welcome to the group and out you go right off the bat. That's okay, but thank you for that. So we'll note that Commissioner Mr. Mattingly is going to recuse himself for public hearing for A. And with that being said, if we can have our presentation.
One moment. Sure, we follow all of your.
Presentation by staff.
What was that?
Presentation by staff.
Yes, correct. I just have an introduction first. This item is a lot more complicated by the nature of having the different requests than applications you're used to hearing. So we're hoping that with our presentation today, Eric's got, Erica's got some diagrams. If we can make it easiest for you all to walk through each item, but first I did just want to draw your attention to there's three different things. Two of them are in the staff report and reso. The first one that actually I found out about today is there's actually some code enforcement on the street related to trash cans and the public right of way. That the correspondence is there is a lot of people from nearby apartments and whatnot parking on Lucille south of the site. This isn't the north part. This is the south towards the cul-de-sac, 16 different properties. And so I just want to make you aware of that. That is an issue down there for them. The two items that are in the staff report is one. When we always perform site visits before, during, after the staff report writing and when we were taking photos for this presentation you're about to see last Wednesday. It was discovered some extra items on site that don't match the plans that were submitted. So to remedy it, we just made sure that the approval, which is standard language anyway, but we were just very specific about the staff recommended approval being for exactly what was submitted. If they would like to submit for additional items, they have that ability, but it's not on this application.
Okay, right.
And the other item is we also discovered the time limited parking signs that were placed and while that is allowed, it's only allowed for a certain percentage of the parking lot as you all adopted in the ordinance. Like back in February or recommended approval, city council adopted in their ordinance this past spring. So once again, there's a condition just referring to the requirement to adhere to that part of Lamita Municipal Code.
Okay, and I, and I do know in the package we have that June 7th, there was a site visit for what you just talked about, that the building does not conform to the original plan submitted. So thank you for that reminder. Okay. Take it away, Erica.
Thank you. So I guess we do have a lengthy presentation today. And today we are presenting on three entitlements at 25820 Lucille Avenue. Location is also known as Peninsula Plaza. To provide a little bit of background on this site, so it was initially approved for development back in 2005. It was approved for a two-story development at, oh. There we go. At 17,390 square feet as a retail office building with 12 leasable units, seven on the first floor, five on the second. Initially, there were 16 surface parking spaces and a subterranean parking lot of 42 spaces. And there was a loading zone in front of unit 107, which will be projected towards further down the line of that presentation. In 2014, there was an amendment to the site plan to remove tiger teeth control devices from Lucille and restricted traffic to right turn only. In 2021, under site plan 1212, there was a request for a combination of uses specified in Lamita Municipal Code. But the approval was rescinded due to discrepancy of approved plans in comparison to the actual site conditions. So the application that we received in April asks for these items. So an amendment to site plan 1049, which is the legalization of the two unpermitted units. The legalization of the unpermitted expansion of three units, 204, 205 and 206. The addition of a 250 square foot patio. And the allowable uses of 50, 50% under municipal code 11 dash 1.48 point O2B. And there's also a variance request to remove the loading zone. And finally, a shared parking agreement under a minor conditional use permit number five. Here we have photos of the site. So we have an aerial. A general plan map. So the location is located in the commercial area of the, as indicated in the general plan. Adjacent land uses are residential and this property is located along Pacific Coast Highway, which is a commercial area in the city. And the FAR is one to one and the combined floor area is below one point, sorry, one. And this does not include the square footage that was not accounted for. This was only, this only is accounting for the plans that were submitted. The square footage that we are aware of. So this area again is in the commercial area specifically in our zoning, commercial retail and the adjacent zones are commercial retail and residential. Here we have the original plans from 2005. This is the first floor, not including the parking lot. The, as you can see highlighted in red is the areas that are focused on this first floor area. So the loading zone. The red box to the middle and then to the far along PCH is where the permitted or the proposed patio is being requested. And then we have our second floor. Again, and areas highlighted in red are going to be the focus of this request. So these are the plans that were submitted to planning division in April. Here we have the first and second floor. Sorry, go back. The following image, the following slides are going to be images of the site visit that was conducted last week. So we have a southeastern view of the building. So across from Pacific Coast Highway. From the parking lot. And the current parking plan. There are temporary parking spaces designated in this parking lot. So there are two 30-minute parking areas and one 10-minute parking area. And these are the photos that are there are the signs that I observed during my visit. Again, the more images of the parking lot showing where exactly those signs are posted. And a view of the underground parking lot. Here we have a western and a southern view of the building. I do want to note that not all of the units are present in this presentation out of respect for the employee, employees slash workers and business owners. At this time it was opening and you know, I didn't want to take photos of people getting ready to start their day. And so again, first floor area of where we are proposing or the applicant is proposing for approval. So to the far my left of the screen, along PCH is the patio that you see out of unit 101. And then the center towards the southern end of the building in the center is unit 108. Again, some of these are the, these are the photos of these units in particular. So 101, 102. And then unit 108. And then this image that shows the second floor, the second floor plan, second floor floor plan. As you can see, the, again, the northernly part of the building is highlighted and again to the south of the building. We have images of the suites on the second floor. So 205, 206, previous were 203 and 204. And here is where we found some inconsistencies in the plans. Unit or suite 208 was not marked on the submitted plans. It is marked as an open space. And the storage room is clearly not that. It is a conference room of some, a conference room or a meeting room, office area. And then suite 207, which was marked as a void space. And this area is highlighted on the plans. For, for your view. Again, so for the site plan review. We are only requesting approval for what was initially submitted. The exterior of the building will remain unchanged for the exception of any new signage for new tenants coming into the vacant suites. We are requesting approval for those suites that were requested because they will create economic opportunity for the city. In addition, it'll remedy any health and safety hazards posed by unpermitted work. As far as the variance, again, it's a request to remove the loading zone in front of, you know, 107. The loading zone was removed to add 13 parking spaces. And we are requesting this removal because the unit sizes are not consistent or equivalent to other suites that require deliveries. They're very small. We don't foresee any high volume deliveries being made at this location. This parking, the removal of the loading zone will require or provide necessary parking spaces for this location. And again, parking will increase public safety and remedy any parking or traffic issues. The applicant is requesting a shared parking agreement. They were, they provided a parking analysis by RK Engineering Group. Again, it's a multi-tenant building with multi-uses with varying peak times. Currently, there are 71 spaces available, 29 surface spaces and 42 subterranean. Each of the it was parked for one for every 300 square feet in terms of parking requirements under the municipal code. The engineering group determined that 1pm was the peak hour. And there is a surplus of parking at that time. So weekday, there's a surplus of four and weekend surplus of 11. So there is flexibility at this location. For the, I'm sorry, the minor conditional use permit, the shopping center is located along a commercial corridor. And we believe this site facilitates accurate traffic flow to and from the site from Pacific Coast Highway and Lucille Avenue. For this application, the conditions of approval are as follows. So essentially, just to summarize the first one, we are only approving what was initially presented to the planning division and the April application supplemental. The unpermitted. Well, the area that was labeled as a storage unit shall remain as such. It cannot be a office or conference room area. Prior to the use of all unpermitted units, plumbing, storage facilities, patio. The property owner shall obtain all building permits and certificate of occupancy and pay per unit development fees. Each unit may maintain one bathroom within its footprint once permits and search begin occupancy have been obtained. Unit 107 shall open to the second story. The uses identified in the municipal code are permitted up to 50% of a floor area on the ground level. Anything over 50% is strictly prohibited. The planning commission shall review and approve any combining of unit or units with other units. And the site show adhered to the off-street parking, the, the updated ordinance that was brought up by Brianna earlier prior to the presentation. So planning commission, you have options for staff. You can approve the resolutions as recommended. You can approve the resolution with amended conditions. You may deny the application or you can provide staff with further direction. With that, I can, I'm open for any questions. Thank you.
Questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Brenda, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Joaquin.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, Mike.
I've got a lot of questions. So let me understand what they're doing is they're coming asking for permission for what they've already done, which is illegal. Correct?
It was unpermitted.
It was what?
Unpermitted.
Unpermitted.
Illegal.
Illegal. Thank you. Second, what has been presented to us is different from what is actually there. I asked Erica earlier to check to see if any of the prior resolutions contain the same condition that is in this one under compliance. It says if applicant owner or tenant fails to comply with any of the conditions of this permit, the applicant owner or tenant shall be subject to a civil fine pursuant to the city of Lamita Municipal Code. Did you find anything on that?
I did. The original resolution 2005 dash 61, general provisions number 12 cites that exact.
All right. So understanding that not only is this a hodgepodge and they, what they have done, I think they should be subject to a civil fine. And I guess the conference room is not supposed to be a conference room. Is that correct? They've got it completely outfitted with tables and chairs and everything else in there. As I went and looked at it. Unit 207 is stated in here that it's supposed to be clear open from the below unit 107 and it's already floored out, got windows, got a door and everything else. So that's nothing like this. I just don't know where to go on this. Personally, my opinion is that I think that it should be rejected and should go back to them and they do their job correctly. And if they're expecting to get forgiveness, I think that's wrong. This is a major changes here. We've had this history, we've had this in the past where there have been developers do things that aren't, aren't permitted and they've had to go back and take that out. Okay, so in this case, you'd ruin an entire building taking that out, but I think there should be some type of financial ramifications for what they did against the law. And I think this should be thrown back to them and changed and, and the city impose some fines. Thank you.
Okay, before we go. Just make sure that everybody sees what Mike was talking about. Go back to, there you go. So if if you want to comment on these photos, Mike.
Conference room on the, it says storage room on the right. That they said it's going to be a storage room and used for nothing else is completely outfitted as a full-on conference room right now. That's what you see there. Suite 208 was added. And it's there. Is that the one that's going, no, no, that's the one downstairs, sorry. 208 was added and suite 207 that I mentioned on the picture here is not supposed to have any floor in it at all. It's supposed to be open from suite 107 all the way up to the second floor. That's what was stated in their paperwork and their plans. And here there's an actual suite there now. So it doesn't have anything to do with what they said in their paperwork.
Right here. So if you look at this, that'll tell you what Mike is mentioning.
Right.
Obviously, those are the three items that are up for discussion. Okay.
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody was clear on those pictures. Okay, Bob, anything?
A couple of questions. So first that. If this was the original plan to do this work, would it be approved?
That's up to Planning Commission.
No, I'm, what I'm saying is, is there any, is there anything to, to preclude a body like this from approving the structural changes that it would take to make this legal? In other words, the one that was a two-story unit, that was a, or you call it flying or whatever, acrobatic thing. Is there any reason why they shouldn't put a floor in there and create another unit? Is there any reason why the storage unit? And I'm not saying I'm approving this or that I agree with it. I'm just asking, is, is there anything other than the fact that there wasn't an occupancy designed for stories, but you know, given that there's mechanical equipment and everything to support occupancy of it, would that be something that, is there anything to stop us from doing that? Any reasonable?
Yes, and that's the minimum parking requirements because that's based on square footage of the building.
So it's parking?
And added the additional suites add to parking.
The minimum required, yes.
Then changed the, the parking study that was done now. So we don't know whether or not it's acceptable until another parking study with all that square footage and everything is added. Is that correct?
Yeah, so right now Erica had mentioned that there is a surplus of four at the most peak time of the entire week. So 1,200 square feet of additional floor area would actually put them right at that max, that minimum would be equal to maximum, if that makes sense?
No, I understand, I understand, sure.
That's all the questions.
Okay, thank you. And the study that we're talking about, if I can find my, was done by, was it RK Engineering? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so with no further questions from our commission, is the applicant here and do they want to make a presentation? Okay, if you come up to the podium, state your name for the record.
My voice. My name's Jeff Kaufman. I'm the architect for this project. Did you ask for address? I'll give you the address. 2000 East Chapman Avenue, Suite 202, Fulton, California, 92831. And I think I can help with some of the comments and questions and concerns that have been expressed thus far. The plans are depicting what, what's proposed for the, for the site. So that's why on the plans, you don't see anything in suite 207. But when you go out to the site, you see a 207 and it's because it's already there. But if you look at the scope of work on the plans, the proposal is to demolish 207. And the proposal is also to demolish 208. So again, it's the, the, the plan is showing you what's proposed, not what's necessarily what's there. They were done, they were put there improperly, but that's why we're proposing to remove them. In addition, the, the conference room is an interesting story in itself. The, originally it was proposed, it was Sherry, when she was still here, proposed to make that a storage space because there's very limited storage on the premises. So management and, and people who maintain the property can keep some tools and different things into that space. Subsequently, the LA County Sheriff's Office came along and said, can we utilize that space as like a sheriff's substation? So that table and those chairs are being utilized by LA County sheriffs. We like the idea because that presence on this property helps protect the property. It helps protect the immediate neighborhood. And thus far, it's been very effective. If it turns out we can't use it that way, it's not, it's not being rented, by the way. It's, they're using it for no charge. If it cannot be used that way, we'll tell them to leave. And other than that, what I've heard so far from this, from the staff report, we're in agreement with that. I think it was properly represented. It was misunderstood about the, the suites, but I think that's clear now. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Let's go around the horn. Monica, any questions?
No, thank you.
Comments, okay. Brenda, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I do. So this shows us, and I did go to the site, suites that are there that originally were not supposed to be there. And they've come to us three times. Now, I haven't been here. I wasn't here when all that happened, so I don't know what was presented prior. Three times and all three times, this city has found issues with what they propose to do and what they do. As far as the parking with the increased space, whatever they use that space for, we can't reduce parking spaces for that. If they take away the timed parking, then that opens up for residents that are going to get liposuction or their nails done or whatever. The building is predominantly empty and we're having a lot of trouble throughout the city filling our empty spaces. So I, I don't want to be a deterrent for more businesses. But yet on the other hand, I don't want to set a precedence that says we approve this, ah, you did this, it's okay, now we'll approve this. Oh, you did this, okay, well, we'll approve that too. And so I kind of agree with, with Mike in there should be some kind of ramifications. And for developers that come in and mislead us and do their own thing anyway. And just kind of become, oh, well, it's okay, we're going to forgive you because we really want the businesses in our city. But there's a difference between wanting businesses and wanting people that aren't trying to pull the wool over the city's eyes. And I'm not saying that's what this client is doing by any means. But I just don't want to set a precedence and say, okay, well, we're just going to automatically forgive you because you did what you wanted to do in the first place. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, Joaquin?
I, i-if they're in agreement of undoing what's there already and staff is okay with that, then I think that should, that's what should happen.
So my comment in our package, there's a comment in here that the applicant, Mr. Jeff Kaufman filed on behalf of the owner, Mr. Nows Ready, applications for several entitlements to bring the site into compliance with the Laminia Municipal Code back in 2021. Did that happen?
Uh, no, no, 2021, I believe was Site Plan 1212, which was rescinded due to inconsistencies in the site, the plans provided.
Okay. And I have to agree with Brenda. I mean, I think when this first came to us, we were all in agreement that a commercial building, while there were a lot of vocal residents on Lucille, it was approved because of compliance with the codes at that time. And if they have done this since then, again, I think we're all sympathetic with having businesses come in and I know they were having a hard time leasing and I know we were, you know, they were up before us a few times, but as we have found out recently, developers that are not in compliance should not obviously get away with it and just, you know, get free rein of what they want to do. So I would agree with Joaquin that if they want to, you know, make this right, then I think that's what we should let them do. So that's my comment. Mike, anything else?
Yeah. One thing that wasn't mentioned, I believe that, that patio off the front of 101 was done illegally too.
Yes, that's part of the request for the site plan amendment to permit that, yes.
Yeah, I didn't catch that earlier. I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that what has been done isn't good for the building and isn't good for the city and for the owner. What I am concerned about is the fact that they did it without permit. All of this stuff without permit and the package that we have before us doesn't reflect what the, what is actually there. I'm not saying tear it down or anything else. What I'm, what I'm saying is there should be some ramifications, like Brenda said, there should be some implications there. And as I mentioned before, there's, it's very clear in, in the resolutions that there should be, you know, that there can be civil, civil penalties. I think that, that my opinion, and I said it before, is that I think before we go forward with this, we should have a clean package of everything that's been done to the building, everything that's going to be undone to the building. And have that presented to us for our review because of the parking that's right close, you know, right on the edge. This panel here cannot impose civil penalties. However, we can be vocal about it, individually vocal about it. So I stand with what I said before. I think this should be rejected and returned to the owner and architect to clean up this package to where it's understandable, where it can be verified that what is there is there, what is, what the exceptions are. And bring it back to the, bring it back when it's done and try and quit, you know, hiding things from our planning department that are trying to present that to the commission. That's what I've got.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Bob?
Yeah, so question for staff. Is there anything that you know of out at the site that's not represented in this? Any, any conditions at the site that are not represented in cleaning it up with all of this? I'm trying to understand what, I guess I could ask Mike what he's not clear on, but I don't want to ask Mike a question. I want to go through staff.
It's my, it's my understanding that they have found things that aren't in the packing.
Okay, so let's hear what those are.
Okay, and depicted properly.
Right. And so as you also heard the applicant mention, they submitted an application for a certain set of plans, like the ones you see on the screen. And the approval recommended by staff is for that exact set of plans. They can't receive a certificate of occupancy until they meet all the required conditions of approval that you all marry or may not approve. So they are required to have the site look exactly like those set of plans before they receive their certificate of occupancy. The other thing I want to mention is that LA County, LA County Building and Safety, they do charge heightened fees for after-the-fact permits.
Saying what?
They charge heightened fees for after-the-fact permits.
Oh.
Is there, if I can continue, is there a, is this on a CVO right now or a TCO or the property? Is that under a CVO right now or not the way it exists?
It does not.
There's no CBO, CVO?
There are, but not those units.
But not that represents this? Okay. So there again, I'm not sure what sending it back and clarifying would, would accomplish on that. If, if there are more questions, I think we should hash it out. But let me just say this part. We, every building code I've ever read and worked on and planning code is not designed nor supports being punitive. Love for it to be, I mean, with, with my history, I would love to have had that hammer. But ultimately, where I stand on this is that we need to get it to, they need to be able to realize what it is that they want and get that and get it approved. That's what they want. And what we want in this body is that what they want and what they get gets approved. So we kind of all want the same thing. And the punitive part of it can be discussed, but it's, to me, has to be separate from what we approve or what we don't. If we don't like the way, or any. So I don't want to, I don't want to muddy up what we're trying to accomplish here with these actions that they're proposing. And it sounds as though with Mr. Kaufman that they're trying to clean up some of the issues that are there. The storage room, if that was, that's a big storage room. And that's a waste of space as far as I'm concerned. What I, what I am a little concerned about is if, if any of that's going to be used, I noticed some adequate FAU. But I don't know if that's part of the building or if it was for that individual space or whatever. I would hope that we're looking at all of that. You know, the AC unit that was in there that I saw on the wall. Oh, we're looking at all of that. I think we need to be really tight. Yeah, you can see it in that.
Up on the wall there.
I think we need to be really tidying with this whole thing. As far as, as the owner, tenants, whoever did the work, and ultimately it falls on the owner. I, this stuff just makes the hair on my neck stand up when they deliberately flaunt the law. And maybe my comments are tempered because of dealing with it for so long. We don't get to correct the behavior as much as I'd like to. So I am all for cleaning it up and getting it right and documenting what it is and getting a CVO and then we can wag our fingers and, and say we're watching, but you know, I think it'd be really hard to find a single piece of property in the city of Laminia that hasn't made some modifications without a permit. And I don't say that loosely. So we need to do it. We need to get the permits, but I think we need to move forward on this and get this thing cleaned up and, and get it documented.
Okay, thank you. I have one other quick question. Was staff aware of the LA County sheriffs using that storage now a conference room?
No.
Not that it's a big deal to me, but.
No, we were not aware.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And ultimately, that's irrelevant.
Right, I just was asking whether or not they knew, yeah.
Still.
I mean, I like the idea of them being there in the neighborhood, but I just was curious if they knew about it.
It's not going to, yeah, it's not going to influence.
Okay.
Also, I have a question with regard to the suite 207. What is their plan now for suite 207?
Um, it's supposed to open, so the bottom unit needs to have a higher ceiling. I'm not quite sure how that's going to be accomplished.
Basically, what you're saying is that flooring or whatever, or whatever's in 207 now has to be removed and there will be no.
It's considered void space. So it, it's considered void space. So for, I was under the impression that it was going to be removed completely and not be used.
Can we bring Mr. Kaufman back up and answer that question, please?
And before, while he's coming up, can I ask a quick one of staff?
Go ahead, yes.
So if that remains that, that's another floor, that puts them over the top on parking? Or is that, with that, it's at the edge?
So they're over the top with the parking now.
Right.
And they're requesting the new minor, minor conditional use permit to reduce the parking that's required. And so if there is a 1,200 square foot increase, that's not exact, it's, it depends on the decimals and whatnot, but we could do the math to understand if you did determine that you wanted to allow one or some of those units you see on the screen, the math can be done to see that it meets the 1 to 300 ratio.
Yeah, because blowing that out back to what its original use is incredibly specific.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you're aware of what it was used for before?
It was that aerial, that, that aerobatic or gymnastic thing, whatever it was, right? Okay.
Aerobatic or bad.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
What's the answer to the question from Mr. Steinberg?
So I think that was regarding suite 207, is that correct?
Yeah.
So the intent is to remove the, the floor. There will be no more 207 as Erica described. The suite 107 down below would be full height to the second floor, basically a clear story above it. If we thought we could keep it and support it with parking, we would, we would want to keep it. At least at the moment, we don't think we can. So we would have already removed it, but we want to get through this process and then get our permits not only to do the, the construction, but also to do the demolition.
Okay. Good, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
If 207 stayed to the bottom part, which, what was that unit number?
107.
107, could that be reconfigured to use for, because it's adjacent to the parking, right?
You know, 107 is an interesting space because when Sherry was here, she, she was kind of the advocate of, of, of requesting to be over 50% service on the ground floor because she said your, your suite 107, which is at the far south end of the building and very limited visibility. She said you're going to have difficulty renting that space. And you probably already know, she's no dummy. She was, she's. And um, you probably already know, she's no dummy, she's, she's right, that's a difficult space. However, lo and behold, sometime in between here, between when we talked to Sherry about that and standing here with you right now. Um, a retail tenant comes along and says, I'd like to put a retail tenant space, and it's a good, strong tenant, so we said. We like it, we're, let's, let's use it for retail, um, so that space is already, already going to be. Used, um, you know, what happens in the future, you know? Who knows what the future brings, especially related to tenant spaces, so um, at, at the moment. Um, things are going well, there's demand for the building, there's, there's starting to be activity there, and people like that is, 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 is what it is.
All right, well, that's a good answer, thank you.
Uh, yeah, what is the intent for suite two oh eight, or for the storage room, I'm sorry?
If, if, if we're allowed to let the sheriff's office continue to use it, we'll let them continue to use it, otherwise we'll just make it into storage as was originally intended on the plan. The reason the plan doesn't say it's being used by the, by the sheriff's office is because that only occurred the last few weeks.
Yeah.
So the, the application was already submitted when the sheriffs came, came along, and the owner said, yeah, go ahead, you know, and. Everybody seems to like it, it seems like it's, like I said earlier, I think it's good for the property, it's good for the neighborhood to have that kind of law enforcement presence. You know, Lord knows, we, we have crime problems around, you know, so uh, it's nice to have that.
Do they use it as an office, or do they?
You know, they come there and they, they do their reports, I think maybe they take a, take maybe a break, but I, I guess they're, they go up and they use that area to, to do their reports that they have to file. On a daily basis, I don't know exactly what.
So they're there every day?
I believe they're there every day.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not there full time every day.
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
They're there every day, and I think quite a bit in the evening, which is the key time when, when we want them there.
Right, yeah, right.
Staff, is, is there a possibility for that to be addressed that way? That it could be for use for the sheriff's office, or?
There's a condition in the proposed resolution specifically saying that it shall be used as storage as indicated on the plans, but. Planning Commission has the authority to amend that condition in your approval.
Yeah, no, I mean, but can, can it be?
Let me ask the question with this, is there other space in there for storage that this then can be still utilized for that kind of room?
You know, at, at this point, it would just be, you know, there are a few vacancies of, of, you know, tenant spaces that are vacant. There's a little bit of storage down in the, in the garage area down below, but there's not a lot. Um, it is tight for storing, you know, tools and things like that, but up until now, there's always been vacant spaces where they, they can put all their. And I guess light bulbs and plumbing supplies and things like that.
And I guess the second part of that question is, as long as you and the developer is okay with not getting any money for that space. If you're okay with it, then you guys can go that route if that's what you want to do, but that's up to you, obviously.
I mean, the agreement was that it was non-leasable from the beginning, so we were, we were never going to get any money from it.
Right.
Um, I, I would imagine if, if, you know, push came to shove, it's a pretty big space, I mean, I don't know what the sheriffs would say if we wanted to store a little bit of. You know, maintenance supplies in there, but maybe it could use, serve a dual purpose, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You know, we could use it for storage and, you know, they could use it for their office.
Okay, did you have any more questions, Bob?
Clarification, okay, two oh seven. Is supposed to be, one oh seven is supposed to be an extended ceiling cap.
That's correct.
And now it has a full blown, because I can't tell from here what's, what's behind the door. A full blown space.
There's a floor system.
Completely finished.
That's correct, there's a floor system.
It's got walls, it's got plumbing, it's got everything.
Yes.
So now. Flip side of the coin is if we say, okay, clean up the mess. You're tearing down a quarter of this building to rectify an issue that easily could have not been here.
Yeah.
And I'm just. I'm just founded as to the one, the cost of that. And I, I can't formulate my word right now, so, but I just wanted to make sure that that, that's what we're understanding as.
You understand, you understand exactly correctly, and.
At that whole end of the building has to come down.
Yes. Not the exterior.
And all, all of the glass doors and stuff, all.
My concern is more structural.
Right.
Than.
Well, that's engineering.
Cosmetic.
This was added. So it was that way to do.
Maybe, maybe not. And that, that was my question.
Yeah, it's all coming up, okay.
Uh, any more questions? You have one more for Mr. Kaufman?
Well, so. So we take the storage room and say you can use it for a conference room if you don't lease it, so now you have a fully finished out. Storage room. And. Being used.
And there's parking.
I will say it's the nicest looking storage room I've ever seen in my life.
At the time this photo was taken, they were storing a table and chairs and a plant and a TV and a cabinet.
And an air conditioner.
An air conditioner, so, so, hold on just a second. So. And I don't want to play both sides of this thing, but you now understand what staff looks at when they say. Really, this should be, the only thing, if I understand this correctly, the only reason this isn't, and, and two oh seven isn't going to exist is. Because you can't get to the parking, you can't get enough parking.
That's correct.
Because logically, in this building, and I totally agree with you, taking the floor out between two oh seven and one oh seven makes no sense. Because it's just going to be a two-story high vaulted ceiling unless there's a tenant that wants that ceiling. But if we can't get around the parking, then we can't get around the parking, and so we, we have to decide, in my opinion, how far we're going to go. With the parking before we start talking about, we're going to let them use it, because I don't care, I do care. But I can't care in my decision that it's the sheriff using it, or whether you're leasing it or not, because what about when the Girl Scouts want to use it, or. Or friends of Bill, or whoever wants to use that space, right, there's always going to be a, a. Something that's, makes us feel warm and fuzzy, ultimately, it's being used.
And there's parking involved with the sheriff.
Right, right.
Hasn't been taken into account yet. And it's a good thing the sheriff's there, they get free security. That's great, okay, so, so, so when we figure the parking in for that storage area, then we're over, aren't we? It doesn't, we're right at it, or where?
Wait, wait, let's first stop.
The floor area of that space, the square footage of it. We would add it to the total of what the approval, I think it's seventeen thousand, and. Divided by three hundred to yield the number of parking spaces that would be required on site. Because you're right, regardless of who uses it, Planning Commission has the opportunity to restrict. Anything like you do at every meeting, restrict the use that's there to a certain use. This has, like you mentioned, eight chairs in it, but I don't know the square footage off the top of my head, perhaps it's on the plan. That we have. We have not, no.
I, I think it's like four hundred and fifty-eight square feet or something like that.
For the storage space?
Yes. It does say there, but I, I can't read that from here.
Yeah, these are kind of.
It says four something.
Well, you want to crack open the plans?
Four something.
You have them right there?
Oh, here.
So what's the requirement for over four hundred square feet, three spaces?
It would be two spaces, because it won the three hundred.
It's like one point something.
Yeah, I'm seeing four sixty-seven on the submitted set of plans, and so we would add that. You don't want to go, what the total floor area, the recommended approvals for.
That's part of the total parking requirement.
Yeah.
In, includes removing the delivery space.
The removal, the, the loading zone adds thirteen spaces, which is the total, total parking is seventy-one. The loading zone is not there, so the removal of the loading zone adds an additional thirteen spaces to the parking lot. Um, bringing the total parking spaces uh, count to seventy-one.
That would cover the storage, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question again?
That would, would that cover the storage?
That's what I'm calculating right now, I'm trying to pull up with that.
We may not be able to get the calculations now, but that might be something that happens when they come back again.
There was something about a shared parking with another unit on the, did I, did I read that wrong, or was that in the old? Their old packet?
Uh, no, the part, part of the request is MCU P number five, which is a shared parking agreement, um, basically. With the tenants that are currently implanted, uh, a study to see what the peak demand times were, to see if there was sufficient parking to meet the need, and. Uh, study concluded that there is, that there is flexibility on the site, um, one PM being the peak demand time, uh, there was a surplus of four spaces. I believe during the weekday and eleven on the weekend, um, some of the uses that are currently in this location are medical uses, those have very restricted hours, you know. They're, most are closed after five PM or not even open on the weekends, uh, given the nature of medical uses, um, appointment based.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, are we done with Mr. Kaufman, any more questions from Mr. Kaufman? Monica, Brenda, Joaquin?
Mike?
Uh, okay, thank you again.
I'm happy to come back.
Okay. Let me get a point of clarification, there's been, gentleman has come up twice to the podium, this, can we get him back in the public comment, or? This, this, this is to make a card, or what? I know, I'm just saying, is that for the card, okay, just want to make sure, okay, so. If we're done with all of our comments and questions, then we can go and open up the public comment period. And uh, I presume we have one or two people that want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and open up the public comment period, Mr. Kivitt, welcome back again.
Uh, thank you once again, um, commissioners, um. Yeah, I'm all for, you know, cleaning it up and moving forward, and I. Very much as just a resident of the city, I, I don't like to see a punitive type of approach to these um. Yep, situations, um. Uh, but um, I do like the, the idea of changing the loading zone to additional parking for the site there. And I do believe that the, the shared parking option is viable. I like the idea that the two oh seven, uh, which was built improperly there. That either the floor be removed, uh, creating the void space within the, from the downstairs unit. If it might be used as just, just strictly designated storage in the future. I like that option also, but I, I, I just don't know how it would be limited, uh, going forward down the line. And I do very much like that the sheriff's department is uh, going on site to the property, using, using it as a substation. Uh, there is, um, in the neighborhood. There's, you know, security, uh, law enforcement along the Pacific Coast Highway strip is um, just an ongoing issue, and I. I like very much that the sheriff department has a presence, especially after hours, when there is more of um, uh, you know. On-site need, and well, just a neighborhood need along Pacific Coast Highway there. And um, overall, I'd recommend uh, that just moving forward. And uh, you know, cleaning it up and uh, just getting on with things, it's a very nice building overall, but I know, uh, you know, historically, they've had a tough time leasing it. And I'd like the city to work with the applicant as much as reasonably possible, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kivitt. Uh, Linda, who has another card?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome, if you would uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Henderson, two five nine oh nine Lucille Avenue. I've been there over twenty years.
Two five one oh nine, or?
Nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine, thank you. Hey, go ahead, ready?
Go.
Okay, so listen, um, I've been here since this project started. Uh, there was a hotel down there, the Holland House Hotel, if any of you know that place. It was nice to see it go, and nice to see this come in. The things that they promised never happen, the traffic studies that the city puts on are not accurate. Four hundred percent increase in traffic flow on my street when I raised two children, I, I was, I was. I put cones out to stop cars from flying through there, they come out of that project. They go up to the end of the street, see it's a dead end street, and they fly back down to the end to get out of there. When they took away the spike strips, the tiger teeth, I think you called it, they started making left-hand turns trying to get out at the end of the street. That caused a problem, they, the city. You guys allowed the tenant to remove the tiger strips. You're not thinking about the people who live on that street. With, once again, I'm hearing a traffic study. Here in this flyer that you sent to the house, it's two units totaling sixteen hundred and fifty-eight square feet, not four hundred and eighty. So you, you add that to your square footage, and add that to the parking. I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to add up. Also, you want to take away the loading zone, unloading? When people, delivery people don't care about how big the package is, they're driving a truck, they're driving a big truck. And if you take away that loading zone, they're going to be loading and unloading on the street. I have photos in my phone, I don't know how to get them up here to show you. Of box trucks parked on the corner, blocking a fire hydrant, right on the corner of PCH Lucille. Loading and unloading, I hope you take that into consideration when you think about removing the loading zone. I'm against it, I'm one hundred percent against removing the loading zone. And as far as the, the units, the square footage, one more thing. I have not, I'm not calling this man a liar, but I have not seen one sheriff meeting down there, and I walk my dog nightly. I haven't seen the sheriffs there, I'd sure like to see. Or I'd like to see one of these meetings that they're talking about, because I haven't. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Okay, we have another speaker.
Good evening.
Could you, uh?
Guy Grant, two five eight four seven, Lucille Avenue. Uh, moved there in eighty-seven, developed two nice homes right up the street, raised my family. And um, I have to tell you, that building has been kind of a, an issue ever since they built it. There was always issues with it, with her, now it's, you know, illegal building, it's been gone on there for years. Where they're changing uh, the, the parking, changing the, the, the. Devices that were agreed to initially, because we came down here and visited with you guys and said, this isn't good for the neighborhood. Above it, or below it, south, north, however you want to look at it there, but. All along, the city's allowed these things to kind of go, because they, and, and I'm a commercial guy, I like commercial, I like the business. There's got to have to happen something on, on Lucille Avenue, the parking's terrible from the apartment buildings. They have no more Albertson parking, so they all come over to Lucille. We put trash cans out in the streets, so nobody parks on our spots, so we come home, we can park. Simple, we've had parking violations, we're dealing with Kevin quite a bit, we're dealing with the city, we're just trying to live there. People come in and out, they work there, they're not going underneath the park, they don't know that you have to go all the way around the building, all the way down the driveway to park. You go there to do business, unless you were told probably to go down there to do, use the underground parking. They park on the street, maybe they go through the parking lot first, but probably fifty percent of the people park on the street right there. Or they try to park over at uh, La Mita Trailers Parking Lot, that's a no-go zone with that man. You guys know him. He, that's a no-go zone with him, you know that, so. Shared parking, I don't know where the shared parking is, you said it was at, well, over at Walgreen or something? I don't know, but they're coming all the way down from the police station, you said that, got a police station at the top in Arbonne. It, it's a block away from this parking police area there, so. We got some issues here on Lucille Avenue, and it's the building, yeah, you, you, you should have them clean it up, it should be legal. It should have proper wiring, it should have proper inspections like any other building, that's you guys. But I'm telling you, you got a problem with Lucille Avenue parking, period. Maybe we need to have resident little badges, you guys can create some residue by writing tickets for all the people that aren't having badges or, or. Uh, parking passes like they did on Hermosa Beach, and we're down to beach and everywhere. Whatever you guys want to do, but we got to make it safe for the kids on the street. Gary brought it up, you know, they do fly up and they fly back down, thinking that they're going to get out at the end of that street. Got no, he says dead end zone and all that, people don't pay attention to that, they don't pay attention to where they can park or not, twenty-minute parking, who's enforcing that? Nobody's there at the building doing like, you got a, a parking monitor, is that my turn? Anyway, I think you guys get the picture.
All right.
I'm not anti-building, I'm a pro builder, I'm a construction guy, but we gotta do something with the parking, you can't take away any parking, please.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you very much. Uh, Linda, anything, anybody else online or anything? Is anybody online? No? We're looking at the same. Two people online?
And now? Anything?
They're both, looks like they're muted. Well, hearing no one else, then we can close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for any more comments or questions. So with that, I will start with uh, Monica, anything?
Oh, yeah, it, is there a way to make sure they do what they're supposed to do? And not just filter, skelter, go, you know, create these situations? I mean, if we approve everything they want to do, do we really know it's done? And then once it's done, are they, they're gonna do something else, um, you know, you wonder. So is there a way to monitor this better, so we're not back doing this again, because this will be, what, third time? Fourth? Okay, we're like, let's, can we just do what we need to do and be done and have it right?
Okay, thank you, Monica, Brenda?
Yeah, um, if, I'm gonna get a bad name here, because I'm like the parking queen of Lamita, but um, I agree with what the gentleman had to say, I mean, and I been to that plaza many times, okay? I've never had an issue parking, it's, it's never full per se, I've never seen it full. And I've been there in the morning, I've been there in the afternoon, I've been there in the evening, and there's nobody there. Um, and to be quite honest with you, I was totally in all my travel over there, unaware that there was underground parking until this packet came up. And I went, underground parking, wow, what a concept, so. I I think even at seventy one parking spots, I mean, I, I think it seems the building is not full, and maybe when it, it leases out and it gets the capacity, then, you know, they could apply to redo the parking. But I think if they take off the thirty minute and the ten minute and all that good stuff, and allow their patrons to park there, um, that the, the parking spaces that they have, and if they utilize that underground parking instead of keeping it a secret from their customers, um, I don't really see the issue with the parking, and I think it'd keep it off the street. It also said, like, to suggest maybe a no left turn out of Lucille, I too live on a cul-de-sac. And people don't read no through street, dead end, whatever it says, I don't even know what it says. But there is a lot of, you know, you turn out and all of a sudden you're going the wrong way and you race back to P C H. I'm, so I am sympathetic with that, as you all know, um. So I think if we leave the parking and we make them fix the ways, the errors and, and, and do this, I, I think, um, I would be amenable, but I, I can't see taking away or even making the loading zone parking spaces would be better than, you know, to put them on the street. We all know that street's very narrow and, you know, so that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Joaquin?
No questions.
Okay, um, reading the uh, staff report, I think this froze here. Uh, I was reading, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, and the conditions, it says, uh, that there is uh, what did I see, here, here it is, uh, about the parking, oh, in the loading zone, says here, uh, based on unit sizes, it is unlikely that semi trucks or large delivery trucks will be delivering to the property. Evidence indicates the site was built in fourteen without the loading area, and instead with the additional parking, which is a value to the nearby Lucille Ave- Avenue residents. That did not find any records of complaints pertaining to delivery trucks. Is that a true statement or not?
That's true.
So we just heard from at least one gentleman that said he's concerned about parking and the delivery trucks, so.
And it's also the delivery trucks that is the first time assessed staff.
Okay, I'm just curious, okay. Whether they called the city or they called the sheriffs, we don't know, but apparently they didn't call the city.
Apparently, what was?
I said either they called the city to complain, or they called the sheriffs about the issues, but you didn't get calls or complaints.
We have not, um, as far as either of us are aware, directly related to delivery trucks.
I just want to make sure I understand that, okay. Um, I'm okay for now, so Mike?
When they, when they took out the spike strip, the tiger teeth or whatever you want to call it, wasn't there a requirement to put a right turn only sign up? Because I, I, I go up there quite often to the, to the plaza myself, and I don't recall ever seeing, maybe I haven't reached, looked at, I know that there's one on the P C H that says right turn only. But to address Cypress, I don't know if there is a sign that's
No left turn, right turn.
I mean, on Lucille, I'm saying, I mean, uh, sign on there or not.
I would imagine, we've both been with the city for less than seven months, we unfortunately were not here when, um, that went through. And we, so we also don't have that specific resolution immediately available, so I don't know for sure, but if I were to guess, then it would be required, and if not, you, regardless of whether it was or not, you can include it tonight.
It can be a condition.
Yes, it can.
Just to echo, in two thousand and fourteen, when the Tiger Teeth Traffic Control Device was removed, there was a condition to put the right turn only sign onto P C H only.
On P C H.
That's the only one that I remember.
Know that one, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
So I mean, that, that being, that being the case, you know, can, is there some way that we can get a complete summary? And I know it's gonna be, have to address probably several conditions of the current resolution or new condition, or new, yeah, new conditions uh, to, to resolve, resolve this, as to what has to be accomplished. And what is, and what is okay, you, you've got me, because we're talking about quite a few different things here on what they say they're gonna do and what we want, want them to do. Like, I'd like to see a condition for right turn only on
Lucille.
Lucille, thank you. I don't know why I'm thinking Cypress. Yeah.
Just don't put Cypress in there.
But, yeah, I, I'm just trying to understand what all has to be done from a legal standpoint and from a staff standpoint and from a commission standpoint. What has to be taken care of in this resolution for us to be able to tie a bow around it?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that, so, um, the way the resolution is drafted before you tonight would approve exactly what they applied for.
Originally.
If you wish to allow anything that's out there now, then you would need to add that to your motion when you make the motion to approve, or if you wish to add the sign, any sign, parking underground, whatever it might be, um, that can be added to your motion, but as they submitted plans, the resolution matches exactly that, and we got very specific and went down to naming suite numbers, so just to clarify, because I know this is complicated, is that? Yeah.
So the story has to go back to story. Sweet two oh seven disappears. Or the floor comes out, whatever, whatever.
And two oh eight, and two oh eight also.
And two oh, two oh eight, okay, okay.
That's the
That's, because that's not part of this.
That wasn't.
That's correct, that was not, um.
But there, aren't they already loading, uh, furniture and stuff into two oh eight? I mean, I don't remember, because I was there the other day and I saw all types of things going on, on as far well, I think the, I think the beauty salon is down on the ground floor.
Right, uh, one oh eight has furniture, it's currently marked on the plans as vacant.
Um, that's one of the new
That's some, that's one of the new ones that's under the
Looks like.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that, that's my concern is that we get, have it, I know you're saying what they submitted plans for covered by the resolution, okay? What they haven't submitted, submitted plans for is what? Which means it would have to change. Now, that change would become effective by, through code enforcement, is that correct?
That's one way, the other way is Yes, so
Ask forgiveness again.
The first step would be getting approval from L A County Building and Safety, and then getting their certificate of occupancy. When planning, um, provides final sign off on those, we make sure that every single condition in the planning commission resolutions are met before providing final sign off. In every city I've worked in, it's a, it, it does happen that afterwards, someone might do subsequent work that, you know, and without getting permits or whatever it might be, and at that point, it's a code enforcement case.
Okay.
Just like we had before, the situation we had
The one we had previously.
We had previously
Mentioned.
That's correct.
Previously, was a code, it, it was done and it became a code enforcement, you guys weren't here.
Okay.
Came a code enforcement.
But just to piggyback on yours, there was a comment made about enforcing what was originally permitted, and we don't enforce that. We actually, well, it was
I'm sorry.
It was thought that we do, that's code enforcement, so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that.
Right. And code enforcement took care of that situation.
Yes.
Because the developer brought it to the commission to change the
Well, just put something in there, just, you don't want to muddy
Put something in there, and it was denied by the commission. So then it became a code enforcement issue to go and revert back to what it was supposed to be.
That, that's one role of code enforcement, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, members of the commission, I would also add that the commission itself has enforcement powers to bring back any approval. So any approval that you all make, if you find out later that they're not complying with the conditions, obviously staff, we have mechanisms to enforce the conditions. But if you independently find out that they're not enforcing conditions, or the conditions are not being followed, the commission can always, you know, bring things back before the commission, and we can revoke any approvals, and then they wouldn't be able to occupy the building, et cetera.
Right, now, the, the thing is, is if they decided, okay, so it if we prove that tonight, what is not approved, if they want to bring that back, it has to come back to the commission again.
Mm-hmm, gotta go through planning and then back to
Gotta go through planning and come back to us, they have to do the traffic thing all over again. And, and they have to ask for forgiveness again, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
Do you know, okay, Bob, anything else?
Yeah, thank you. So, for the benefit of people sitting in the audience, um, there's, the, the project is subject to conditions. In, in the municipal code, so we have minor, minor condition, minor conditional use, and then we have various findings. And there can, a series of conditions that have to be met. And in those conditions, there are recommendations, and it shows in detail what needs to happen for those conditions to be satisfied. And the reason I say that is that I am in agreement with this right now, as it is presented, because they have satisfied those conditions. I'd love to be able to do something about parking, but I wouldn't start on your street, I'd start on mine. Because there isn't a single resident on my street that can park on the street, and I think that's pretty much the same everywhere, so it's a universal problem. But anyway, um, I'm satisfied that they met the conditions, and, and I think it needs to be I'm gonna make a motion for approval on this with the conditions as they're stated, but I do want to say this one thing before that, is that if, if they, we give them an approval, and they go get permits and approvals, they get approvals from city plan, they go to county and get permits, and they do the work, and it gets done, then we're done, till the next time or not the next time. If they don't do it according to the plans, or they do something in violation of it, and we find out about it, we can make them come back here. If they don't fix it, then we issue an order to comply. If they're in violation of the order to comply, then there's some action that would be taken, because it's not that they did that work without permits, it's that they violated in order to comply, or whatever it's gonna be in, in our case here. The courts, I wish we could spend hours talking about the court systems and how they would hear and see a case like this. It would, it would curl your hair to find out the levels of cases and what they are, how they're seen by the same judge. So they don't put a whole lot into this when it comes to being punitive. I think the best we can accomplish as a jurisdiction, as a body here, is that we get it right. What's out there right now, if they're willing to fix it, we need to give them the avenue to do that and get it fixed, and then get the C of O, and then if there's complaints, then we deal with it at that particular time. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
Second, okay, so there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, I would, uh, call for the question, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
No, we've changed it out from the roll call to that, yeah. Okay, so let's continue with that, so we're, while I wasn't sure, did you respond, Monica? So you're aye, okay, so we're all aye, okay. So it'll pass six to zero, uh, with one abstention, or one recus- recusal. Okay?
And Mr. Chair, I just want to, I just want to be crystal clear, that's without any additional
Conditions, well, let me actually
I just want to be crystal clear on that.
There was the one condition about the right hand turn onto Lucille.
Right, but, but the maker of the motion didn't mention that condition.
No, I know, so
It was as presented, so I just want to be clear with the commission.
So, to go back to that, to include that in there, do we now need to do a new motion, or just the way it was just then?
You know, from my perspective, it seems as though the maker of the motion made it clear, and everyone voted, so I think, I think that, okay, issue's done.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, um, and, and the only reason I didn't, is there's a left turn out at the A C in the back car lot.
Yeah.
Everybody That's fine.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so, it looks as if we are done with this, uh.
Let's get our other position of back.
So, yeah, we can now, uh, so this, I'm sorry, so just to confirm, the motion passes on six, there was zero, one vote. Six, zero, one. All right, with that being said, let's move on. All right, well, welcome back, Mr. Mattingly, thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
Please.
Okay. Uh, let's go to item five, scheduled matters, uh, communication regarding city council actions.
The A D U ordinance that you all heard, um, at your May meeting, it passed on first reading for the council last week, and is on the agenda for second reading and adoption next week.
Correct. Um, I did attend that, was that? I guess I can make some comments about the last council meeting. Actually, no, I'll, I'll wait till six B, okay. Okay, so, anything else?
Yes, I have some stopping out announcements, first off, welcome, Mr. Mattingly to the planning commission, we look forward to working with you. Um, even though you couldn't really participate. Um, the second is that the first G P A C meeting, we have one of our members right here. Um, they, their first meeting is tomorrow, it's an open public meeting, if you'd like to attend, but like I've mentioned a bunch of times already, you all have your own role in that as planning commission, so no pressure, but you are part of the public also, so you're allowed to attend. The public workshop, that is on June twenty second, seventh, excuse me, that's the first public workshop. There will be two more in July, um, the marketing materials will be going out soon, and we'll be making sure you all get individual invites. And that being, that being said, um, I am working with And that being, I'll bless you, that being said, um, I am working with city manager and clerk's office to make sure that you all are receiving individual invites to city events like Railroad or Founder's Day, whatever it might be, so you want to make sure you all are a decision-making body, just as important, everyone's important in the city, all stakeholders. Um, also, if you have any questions on any of the items, um, you can go straight to me, uh, you can email me, call me. Email's definitely the best, because I'm in a lot of meetings, so can't always answer that phone, but, um, if you have any questions, the sooner you can email them to me, um, the sooner we can gather the information to be able to have that answer for you, so you can make your decision on an item. Um. And that's all I have, actually.
Okay, yes.
Um, the GPAC, is that a Zoom component or not?
It's not on Zoom, but if you want to attend in person, you're more than welcome.
Okay.
Well, we, if, when we do, we tend to.
Lock it out.
But everything that's recommended will come before you all.
People look at us for answers. George has been on all of the emails.
Okay, um. Item number six, other matters, staff announcements.
That concludes my staff.
So that's everything that you had on there, okay? Uh, item six B, planning commissioner items, Monica, anything? Brenda? No? Joaquin?
Uh, no, just want to welcome, uh, Jay. The planning commission.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of quick question, or a couple of comments, I did attend the last council meeting, and a couple of things that Brianna just mentioned were true, the first one was that as you mentioned, all commissioners should be invited to all city events, so that, I want to reiterate that. Um, number two is, uh, we've talked about code enforcement, and Brianna prepared an excellent presentation for the council on code enforcement issues. Uh. And I think Will was in the meeting, and, um, he didn't say anything, but you did a really good presentation on it, so I just want to at least thank you again for doing that. And then, uh, there was, oh, here it is, uh, the other note I had was, I don't know how this came in my head, and I wrote it down, list of recent ordinances enacted. They mentioned that at the council meeting about maybe getting a list of the recent ordinances, but if we're going to be going to the GPAC, maybe it's not worth getting that right now. Do you remember, do you remember that comment that somebody had mentioned?
I, for somehow don't, I pay attention to those things, but in every second meeting of the month, I provide a monthly report, every department does it, but I provide it for the Community Economic Development Department, and so that will be on next Tuesday, Tuesdays' agenda. Um, and in there, I actually do have every ordinance that was adopted this year listed, and what date it has or will gone and go into effect.
Okay, so is that something that?
I can email that straight to you too.
I was gonna say, yeah, can we get that as part of our package?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I think that's helpful as well. Sometimes we remember only what we want to remember, and all of a sudden we're like, oh, okay, I didn't know we. Yeah.
Um, I do report on this meeting, so tomorrow morning, that's the last thing I have to plug in.
Right, I get it, I'm not trying to put more on your shoulders, but just, if you make the copy, then, you know, do the report, you just copy it, but uh, I wanted to, uh, ask about that, and then there was one other item that I had on there. Um, yeah, obviously, we know that they did do the second, they approved the, uh, don't text amendment, it's coming back for a second reading, so. Okay, that's all I have.
And, and I did fail to mention one item, but I'm coming up, uh, on your agenda, it relates to that, so I figured I would wait. Um, I spoke with city management about the bylaws that the planning commission adopted most recently in two thousand and four that says, we, we read the language, and it says that, um, the chair would be the representative at city council meetings and whatever other meetings, but it doesn't explicitly say it's a requirement to attend each one.
That's what the other thing was, I remember we talked, you guys talked about that, yes.
I just want to let you know, um, once again, though, those were last updated in two thousand and four, and so if you all would like to update those, any part of them, I'm happy to bring that back to you.
I found my note on here, and that's what it was, to re-up that, so we can get that a little bit more brought into twentieth century, you got it?
Sure thing, we, we could do just a lot.
That's what I had on here, okay. Okay, that's all I have, Mike?
The only, the only thing that I have is thank staff again, you know, that tonight's was quite an ordeal. Um, and, uh, I want to apologize, because I get a little frustrated with things because, uh, it's happened before, okay? And you just don't want to see it again. Other than that, uh, the only other item is, sure, seeing an awful lot of graffiti everywhere. I mean, little walls like this off the sidewalk, you know? And.
Let me make a quick comment for you, I've talked to Brianna before the council meeting, and she made a very good presentation about it, and what the best way to get some of that done is to either document it and just email it to, uh, Will or to Brianna.
Will or myself.
And hopefully that'll get started and cleaned up, so it's not just graffiti, it's the dumping of things, you know, couches and furniture that's sitting out in front of people's yards for a while, cars on front lawns, I mean, she went through the whole presentation, it was a really good presentation, and, um, I have made a couple of calls to Brianna about the graffiti, because it's starting to really get mad, especially down La Mita and especially down PCH.
You mean, I can't park my RV sideways?
No, 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 no. Um. Yeah, so anyways.
Not under your requirement.
Yeah, so to echo your comments, yes, I am.
Can I, my phone, first, we can't park with, for any requirement.
I'm sorry? Yeah. So anyway, the graffiti thing was on my radar for a while. Okay. That's it. Bob?
I want to volunteer for the July fourth council meeting.
I actually was going to break, I was going to bring. I was going to bring that up and tell us that everybody had to go to that one.
Um, so I, I missed that, that when, when you were having your dialogue really quickly, so it says that the chair is supposed to go to all the council meetings?
It doesn't say supposed to, but it says that they would be the representative, there's no language in there mandating and requiring.
The chair, so, hold on, my turn, my turn.
Now, well.
So my, our conversation before offline um, of why are we doing it at all? That it was, didn't you say you found something that the council required?
This was the planning commission bylaws that Linda found. Oh.
Yeah.
I was not here.
No, he was at the wedding.
But is there any component in council bylaws that requires that we, the, are represented from each commission meeting?
I do not mean to know the answer to that question, I would imagine it doesn't, but we will certainly double check.
Yeah, let's, let's look at that, because this is a digital age, that, you know, it, this is kind of, we get a great report from you every, after every meeting, I don't understand the need.
Well, that's why I said.
I, I venture to ask anybody here, have you ever been called on from council? And you couldn't answer anyway, you couldn't give an opinion anyway, it's like you're taking notes, ridiculous.
I did that for two and a half hours, I took notes, I mean. No, but.
That's what he said, it's ridiculous.
I condensed it, because I said Brianna did an excellent job of presenting a few things and not.
It's, it's, yeah.
I know, so I'm just, I'm reporting back as the chair to tell you that I did attend, that I took copious notes, but Brianna did a great job of doing her presentation and a quick summary tonight.
Let's quit doing.
So, thank you again, Brianna. Okay, with that being said, anything else? Jay, any comments?
Say thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to accuse myself.
See the, this one off, yeah.
No, that's fine, thank you all for welcoming me, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, with that, we go to the next big item, which is commissioners to attend council meetings. Uh, July fourth, obviously is out the door, but, uh, July eighteenth, I'm not going, it's my birthday, so.
Well, it's my birthday too, why?
You guys have the same birthday?
Well, it's not on.
Uh, mine is the eighteen, so, but anyways.
We've got a lot of names.
Does anybody know cancer? That's a cancer, but anyway, does anybody want to go, if not, we'll just let it fly until somebody, uh. Did, did you say, would you raise your?
Monica, welcome back.
I think, were you raising your?
Monica.
Were you raising your hand? Yeah, she just raised her hand, I think, no. Well, in light of what we just talked about, I think we can just worry about not being there. We, we'll get a report from Brianna, she does a great job on it.
When is it? Oh, that's July.
July fourth or July eighteen?
I'm going to be there, I'm going to be there, uh, the twentieth of this month.
Next, that's, next week.
Yeah, 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 because of the gang walk.
Oh, you got to do that, okay, all right.
Okay, I'll take your notes.
What's that?
I'll be there.
With that being said, motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-nine, thank you, everybody. Thank you, sir.